I'd like to call Park Council Meeting Board for another second. I'd like to start off with the moment of silence, please. Operation My Lady just moved back to her blue pants. Before we start, I want to go over the meeting, guys. I need a little cooperation. Please wait to be acknowledged so we can talk. I understand once in a while someone will blur stuff out. That's just us, but please wait to be acknowledged and please help me to try to remember. Okay? I appreciate it. Approval Council Minutes appear any October 31st. Is that motion? Second? Question?
Yes, any comments?
Go ahead.
Some of the information is incorrect. Under deferred business, the code divisions, it has the motion carried five to zero. Councilwoman opposed, so actually it needs to be five to one.
We're doing expenditures.
I'm sorry, I thought you said the minutes.
I'm sorry.
I know, you said the minutes.
Well, I apologize. I'll tell you what, if I said the minutes, let's do the minutes first. Go ahead.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Under the deferred business, so it says that the motion carried five oh, it needs to be five one. And then under new business, it has DMSA Beer Garden, anyways, the motion carried five oh, it needs to be five one. And... Yeah, that's it.
I apologize for my medication. Did you guys look at her? I tried to follow her.
Yes.
Is everything okay? Everybody clear? This is... Okay? All right. We have a motion to second with the changes.
We didn't actually get a motion to second for the minutes. I have it recorded as expenditures.
I'm sorry.
It said minutes.
Yeah, they said it's...
Can I make a motion for the minutes? Second, right?
Make a motion.
Make a motion for the minutes. Second.
What, just redo it? Can I have a motion to second for the minutes?
Oh.
The second? Sorry. And with the changes, you already said them. So a motion to second with the changes, all favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. Second, approval of expenditures. And my parent's first motion to approve.
So move.
Second. All right. Questions?
I have one question.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ann.
On page sixteen of the first pack, it says expenditures to be approved, page sixteen. I just have a question about the one expenditure for $1,200 for park field maintenance to Tom Burford LLC. I just haven't seen that expenditure before. Can you explain who that is or what we're doing, why we're... You know, what that expenditure was for? Because that would be...
I got to get through the right page.
Page sixteen, and it's next to last.
For you, me, and Tom Burford.
Yeah.
Is that you, Jackie? Anything else?
Yes.
Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, due to our current staffing levels and some rearranging of personnel that we had last year, we contracted out some maintenance items to include the ball field maintenance and some tree work. There should be tree work in here also.
Yes. Yeah, they do that. Anything else?
Well, if you contacted it out, then was it something that needed to be put out for a bid?
Excuse me?
Was it something that needed to be put out for a bid?
No, the bid threshold, I believe, is $10,000.
Okay.
It's always been $10,000, right?
Actually, I think it's been raised. I think it's more about $18,000 now, something like that. So, okay, so...
Any other questions? Any may I ask? I have one, the first one. Century Media Films, you... Net 236, was that a charge made for because of that cancel meeting, one of the many charges? Was that re-advertised for that?
I believe it could be, yes.
Okay, that was one on the third. Okay. I won't go long, there's a big list, but I just want to make sure that's what it is. Okay.
Yeah, I thought I had a question. If... I'm sorry. May I have?
Yes. Just raise your hand and we'll try to keep some order instead of screaming out. Okay?
May I have?
Yes, go right ahead. Yeah, you're a first grader, man. Excuse me.
It's interesting you brought that up, that because I know that meeting was canceled because there was not a forum, but I thought that council voted, go ahead and call councilors so that there would be a forum.
We can't have forum with a phone call. That was the last one I was... You cannot get forum, you can add people in, but you cannot have forum with someone on the phone. That's bad.
It could be four.
No, well, but we decided after that is what we realized we couldn't.
Excuse me, guys. Exactly what we did...
But you know what? Sorry, he had to raise his hand. But, okay.
I told Tom I moved word after... Go ahead, Ann. I'm sorry, you still have another question?
No, that was it. I just wanted to point that out because I know that previously, in fact, we have had council members call in and vote via phone, so I did not realize that the policy had changed.
And we corrected that, and yes, you were, because we did it together. The policy was, if you're not going to be here and you wanted someone to call, you would make the call, you would let them know, give them the numbers that you wanted to call, and we would do it. That was the policy that everybody said.
And she was called.
Okay? But I know you weren't called. That's beside the point, because there's so many numbers and iPads, and you set it up ahead of time if you're not going to be there. Okay? If you want to be called, if you want to be... That's the way we'll set it. If anybody remembers anything different, please let me know. Okay, we have a motion to second for expenditures, all in favor? Opposed?
Not opposed.
You have that, Steve?
Yeah.
Citizen to be heard. Name, address, we have a time wrong. You're at Georgio Mall, 149 East Manchester Avenue, Downingtown.
Last meeting, I asked for paperwork for the 249, the street sidewalks. I only got like four pieces of paper, it was nothing. We're all talking about it until I got it from Ann. And was explaining what was going on. I never got all the information, I don't know why. Second thing I'm seeing right now, President Guzerro said you have to raise your hand. Ann, raise her hand to speak, she did. Well, Mr. Thomas, Lord, this is a president saying nothing. The mayor says the same thing. Now, I want to know why you prosecuted her and wouldn't let her talk. She's representing the people on this ward, represent us, so you have every right, like every council person, to speak. Not this marginalized and...
Thank you, George.
Anyway, the other thing is...
Excuse me.
I want to talk for five minutes.
She didn't raise her hand.
I didn't finish. I didn't finish. I'm still speaking, okay?
Okay, guys, please, 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 please. And we will have someone blur that one soon on, guys. It's a surprise, sorry.
The other thing is, right here on the first paragraph on the meeting, we say you have five minutes when you speak about it, whatever you speak about it, about the ordinance, about 249, streets, sidewalks. We have the right to speak five minutes, right?
No.
What it says right here, it's not saying...
You're misunderstanding, that's not the way we're going to meet the floor.
Well, the first paragraph...
You know what the minutes are, so don't act like you don't...
Point of order.
No. I'm asking you.
You ask me a question, I answer.
Okay. Can you read the first paragraph to see what it says?
Well, I have to see, let's do it. Can you please explain? Excuse me, Ann. Can you please explain it this way? We've always done it, citizen to be heard, we don't let them talk to us, and we conduct this, it's never happened.
I didn't say that.
The sixteen...
I didn't say that. I said after the council have the questions, the citizens to be heard, I mean, the citizen is supposed to have the right to speak for five minutes, exactly what it says here.
What are you reading from, George?
From here, from the rules.
Rules of law.
The rules, so you have to speak. Well, the first paragraph, the first paragraph.
We've always done, and if it's in there, we'll correct it. That's not the way it should be.
Well, Borough Council does not require to allow for public input after every decision on every item on the agenda. That's why we have citizens to be heard to begin, so that's your opportunity to provide public input.
Yeah, but I think it's citizens to be heard, okay? But after that, the same up here, you have five minutes after the council speaks and talks about it, to talk again.
I don't know what you're reading, guys, it's not the way we go.
That's if it's a specific, if there's a hearing or if there's testimony. So there's no hearings that are scheduled.
Well, this is not... Well, we're talking right now.
No, it's not a hearing.
Anything else, Peter?
I'd like to talk about the sidewalk. That's what I want to talk about, the sidewalk, about the bricks and everything else. So I can, for the main street, that were here, people from main street from before, where the sidewalks cut up and put the bricks in it, the borough was responsible to fix them. That's why they kept the bricks right here at the border property, so everybody uses the same kind of bricks. It was there back in 2007. He did this, Mr. Hamilton, Mary, Jeff, Mary Cassidy, that were leaned over, that's what it was. It was a perfect sidewalks, we cut it, a question was asked, who's responsible down the road? And the borough says they were responsible for it.
Again, George, we have to, we have asked you to bring papers here if you have any.
I didn't have papers. You just have the papers, there's so many minutes.
There is no papers. Steve checked, and I did check with several people that were running the project in charge, and they said that was never said. So I did follow up on it.
Well, he can testify. I mean, no...
I followed up on it, I asked the person that was in charge of it, and he said never, ever was...
Well, they were lying then.
Well, I don't know, but that's... I'm not here to... I'm just telling you, I asked, I said that we have nothing, and we should have had something on file. We have nothing on file state, correct, Steve?
No, I found.
Nothing. All right? That's all we can say about the year. Sorry. Unless you have something to bring in?
Well, we'll bring it up, because the whole street, okay? If that happens, we're going to file suit against it, and everybody's ready for it.
All right, George. Thank you. Any more citizens to be heard?
Sarah Brown, East Brandonville Township.
Sarah, and I just want you to know, it's normally, okay, citizens and taxpayers, but you're out of town, but we're going to extend that privilege to you, so hopefully... Hopefully, okay.
Sir, this is in regards to the juvenile behavior...
I'm just saying, hopefully, things usually come up, so we'll ask. But I'm going to let you talk, but we don't have to because you're not citizens. Don't worry, Ann.
I need to reset that.
We will. She can. I'll give her extra. How much?
I won't be using all of it, I promise. I want to talk to you about the juvenile behavior of certain members of the council at this point, including you, sir. This is, you are not depoluted, and you should not be treated as such. You have to be able to listen to your residents here, not me necessarily, but everybody who is here. And if there are questions other than past this point, you should have the courtesy to allow them to speak and ask questions of you, which is also something that happens in other council meetings, whether they be the boards of supervisors or townships. Okay? Heinous people and the resident kind of citizens next to you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Roger Vaughn. Next will be ordinance 2016-6, Amendment Street Chapter 249, streets and sidewalks. We advertise in October 26th, we'll be motion to adopt.
So move.
Give me a second, I'll second that. Questions? Okay, all favor?
I'm sorry, I was thinking of my question.
Okay.
I just want to be sure that what Georgio is saying, you don't have any documentation before it goes. You're saying...
I mean, no disrespect, but I can't find it, and if someone agreed to take care of something that you were supposed to agree, there are many shop owners along the way, they're having, if someone would have had some type of an agreement, I would think, but I don't have it, and I don't know anyone that ever has produced it, so if it is out there, it may be out there, but...
I personally checked, and they said no, there was never anything written up, there was never, never been anything to be found. All right. Ann, you said you had a question, I'm sorry.
Raise my hand, not your hand.
Okay. All favor? Opposed?
Not opposed.
Okay. Next, appointment of interim tax collector. Do we have a motion to... I believe it's Paco, who remained interim?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. There is, there will be no additional funds, no additional cost to the borough. We have the funds to do that, the rest of this year and next year will carry...
I just, one question. Sure. Is she, Steve, is she prepared and to do the makeup work that's required to get us to where we need to be day one for that question?
I mean, I had a brief conversation with her. She understands the goals and the needs of the tax office, and I think she's willing to come in. Her first priority, I think, will be for the non-payment of taxes, because that needs to be submitted by, I think, the second week of January. So in actuality, I don't know where we are with the tax office right now, so she's going to have to do some work.
Is she bonded yet?
She is not. I would not fund anyone if we didn't get the votes, so...
Okay, and is she pending with her deputy?
At this point, that's something we never talked about, but I wouldn't have to, she would at this point.
All right. It'd be really nice to tap, because you really do help.
Yes, really. And she's pretty sharp. She lived in the borough ten years, guys, and she worked in the tax office seventeen-plus years and had jobs, and she has a lot of great credentials. She is familiar with some of it, she worked there some, so hopefully she's going to pick it up. Sorry to be a long-winded. Motion to second, all favor? Opposed? All righty. Next, the highlight of the evening, Downingtown Library. The excellent Williams.
Thank you. Deborah Miles, Three Brown Avenue, Downingtown. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Downingtown Library, and I was asked by the board to come this evening and give you folks a little update of where we are now, and I'm happy to do so. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for your general ongoing support. During the summer, the borough has mowed our grass. You have been kind enough to remove snow during the winter. The library is extremely, extremely grateful for that, for that help. Last week, we learned that we got, the borough and the library got the community revitalization grant. Tom, Yuhaus, and Steve Solins worked with the library to put a very detailed grant together, and this is going to, it's about $199,000. It will allow us to do the hardscaping, our exterior, to make our exterior look as lovely as the interior.
Do you mind if I... I'm so excited about this on the board. Can the rest of the board come up around this support?
Absolutely. Come on up.
This board's great, guys. I've been really proud. You guys are all proud. I'm so proud of you. You know, I just think it should become a... Paul, this is one...
And I'm going to tell you, you have, this is just a few of the people right now. You have a great board in the Downingtown Library, and everybody works so hard and the like. So I'm assuming that... Thank you, thank you. I'm assuming that next spring is when we'll begin the hardscaping. If you're not familiar with it, we'll work on the beginning of the parking lot. We'll have one entrance, one exit. We now have two exits, and that'll make things a little simpler. Sidewalk lighting, some ground, working on the drainage issues on the property. So I think it's going to look just great, and then we can begin to work on our landscaping project. So thank you to the borough for Steve and Tom for their wonderful help in putting together that successful grant, just delighted. I wanted to give you a little bit of information about our statistics. Since we've moved into the library, computer usage is over 300 percent greater than our spot on Old Lancaster Avenue. In 2015, we moved in, of course, in January of 2015. In 2015, our circulation went up by 28 percent. In 2016, it's gone up by 5 percent, so we're at 33 percent above where we were in our old site. Our patron visits are also sky high. We have a change to report. Karen Miller, our director of 25, well, our employee for us of 25 years, is going to be retiring. She started out as the children's librarian, and that she changed, became our director, and over the last couple of years, she's been both acting as both director and children's librarian. And she has just been a tremendous help during this, the move that we undertook, and I just want to do a shout out for Karen. We have a search committee that will start to work on her replacement, we're working on a job description, we'll get that posted. We're also seeking a children's librarian, so you'll be hearing more about that kind of thing. We've been fundraising, and in our new building, which we absolutely love, our expenses are about $50,000 or more than before. So we are working very hard at fundraisers just to meet that additional fiscal responsibility. As you know, we're also in the midst of a capital campaign. We are working very hard to find grants, find organizations, work with individuals who will support us, and just regular fundraising also for that. And so we are, I have to say that we, our last payment to the borough is in September of 2017, so our capital campaign definitely officially runs at least through that period. And I think I can speak for the board probably when I say that we will be really happy to have the capital campaign officially end. We'll still be raising funds as we can, and certainly we'll have to on an ongoing basis for the operating expenses that are higher there. But as I said, the board is amazing, it's wonderful, where it's a tireless effort to raise funds on behalf of the library. And with that said, on behalf of the board, I am delighted to make another payment towards the balance due that we owe you for the purchase of the property. So, and I will say before I do it, that you can, people say that you can tell the health of a community by looking at the library it offers its citizens. And I think with the support and help of the entire community, we've really put together a very nice little organization. So on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Downingtown Library, I'd like to present you with a check for $100,000.
Wow. There you are, guys. I have to tell you, the library board wasn't the one.
Characterize it.
And it was quite a challenge. You guys always knew what you're saying. We never had a word about you. And the close to 16 years I've been here, you guys just outshine everybody. And you guys are great for towns, kids, older kids, my wife loves it, gets folks all the time. We're very proud. I just want you to know that.
It's a pleasure to work.
I know, I have from the bottom of my heart, what he hires to do for us. Thank you, and thank those who have people like you to help us.
Thank you very much.
And that's the resolution 2016-13, supporting the campaign that sexual and domestic violence. Josh, you want to give a little thing on that first before we start, so everybody knows what's left?
Yes, fantastic. So earlier this year, I met with the Chester County Movement and Girls Fund, representatives from the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County and the Crisis Center, Crime Victims Center of Chester County. Did that make contact?
Yes.
And we tried to formulate how we can work together in Chester County to create reforms in boroughs like Downingtown, get us closer towards a county without sexual and domestic violence. So we reached out to the President of Police Chiefs Association, the District Attorney, and we had a meeting here in this room with representatives from four school districts, three universities, President of Police Chiefs Association, Chief Holland, students, mayors from four communities, and we talked about what we could do starting today in our communities to help bring in anti-sexual and domestic violence. Two of the outcomes that we wanted to bring, and Westchester, Kennet Square, and Honeybrook are considering the ordinance that's in front of you right now, I wrote it and gave it to all of those boroughs, is that we're going to ask our police officers in each of our communities to be trained on the legality program, which essentially is the resources available to the sexual and domestic violence victims. It's a program that Domestic Violence Center does. Every police officer in Downingtown is already trained on this, so this is more or less us setting an example in the goal of making sure 100 percent of the police officers in Chester County are trained on this program. Honeybrook has passed this, Westchester and Kennet Square will be next. The second thing that we're asking is to encourage healthy relationship training in our school districts. Downingtown School District attended our meeting and talked about the program that they do, so they should have from Easton and some other communities as well. So we're just encouraging our school districts to pursue healthy relationship training, beginning in elementary school all the way up through high school. So I would love for you guys to consider this ordinance, and we, Downingtown, to place an active participant with these nonprofits in the interest of bringing in sexual and domestic violence. I just want to thank Chief Holland and the good work that our police department is already doing, that we're an example for other communities on the onset, and hopefully we can encourage communities to join us in some of these reforms. So this has been run by the Chester County Movement and Girls Fund. It's an ongoing campaign, and we'll be bringing things to all of our participating communities in terms of reforms, and I hope that you guys will join.
Motion for adopt?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
What's the name of the program?
Chester County Campaign to Anti-Sexual and Domestic Violence. Corning Campaign to Anti-Sexual and Domestic Violence.
And guys, I'll make a comment. Josh, you've been very involved with this, the police station. You encouraged the whole city to train very well, so it's an ongoing thing for you. This just isn't what we've done. The police are very involved, but trying to keep up with this, one of the police departments around.
Yeah, yeah, two things I should break up on that. This is, we're starting a national program in December through a program called It's on Us, and I'm on the advisory committee for that, and we're encouraging mayors from around the country to adopt similar programs. And so this is a template, a county template, that you're going to see hopefully throughout the country in this December. I recruited a bunch of mayors that I know through networking, Mayor Zibicka and places like that, to join this campaign, and we're launching that in December. I wrote the national op-ed this week that's going out to one of these young elected officials groups to talk, to encourage other communities to adopt similar ones.
Appreciate it. We have a motion to second, all favor? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. More questions?
Raise my hand?
Okay, I did see, I apologize. And we're there.
Okay. There are a couple of things you might want to, you might want to change a couple editing things, like on the last paragraph on page one. Well, I'll start with one thing. I think that that paragraph, the last paragraph on page one and the first one on page two, I think they're switched. I think that the last paragraph on, we'll start at first paragraph on page two, where it says now therefore be resolved that the borough of Downingtown encourages the education of youth on healthy relationships. And that seems like that should be more like a whereas, because we can't, we can't really do anything to school. That seemed like a whereas, that we're encouraging the education of youth. And then if you go to page one, the last paragraph, that whereas should be a therefore.
Which one?
The last paragraph on page one, because that says the borough of Downingtown hereby will mandate every law enforcement, that's a therefore, that's something that we're doing as an action.
Counselor, I agree with your second point. I disagree with your first, but I like the idea of the last whereas on page one being a therefore.
Being a now therefore.
Therefore.
Okay, then you have a couple of little editing things here, where the... Then you have a couple of little editing things here where the, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth whereas, so the one right before the last one. At the end of that one, you want to put and, it's got a semicolon, and then it should have the word and there.
Yes.
And then, that final paragraph, where the borough of Downingtown hereby, you, I would strike the word will and change mandate to mandates, plural, that every law enforcement officer will be trained. Okay?
What paragraph is that?
This is the last one. I'll change to one.
Okay, one.
Yeah, so you want to add, so you want to strike will on the first line and change mandate to mandates that. Okay? And then on the second line, every law enforcement officer, you want to say will be trained. You need to add the word be. And then, you need to take the, the last part of that sentence where it says, "Within six months of their hire," and you want to move that up right after trained. So, the officer will be trained within six months of their hire on the resources available to, okay? Because otherwise you're kind of, or splitting it or something like that. But anyways, so you want that within six months of their hire after the word trained. Okay? And after that, you know, it reads correctly.
I'm talking about all the changes except the first one.
I mean, you can make those changes ahead of time.
I didn't, Mr. President.
I'll say, if you get a change attorney, we're more than happy to...
I could have, I didn't.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Motion is second to change or a relative to change?
And I made those up in the other seat.
Okay, on favor? Close? Thank you, everyone. All right, that's, the preliminary budget's not really reviewed. You're going to hand out stuff. At the end, we have a review set for the 17th. Rex D. C. will hand each one of those, one before we leave.
It's the 16th.
Six, well, what's the date? Yeah, November 16th.
Yeah, well, tonight we just wanted to hand out the draft copies for you guys to get comfortable with, make some notes on, ask some questions, and then we can delve into it on 16th.
Okay, that's what that is. Next, we're going to do the train station update. Josh, you're going to do the train station update and...
I'm going to see enough to do that, actually.
And I'm going to tell you, God bless you, Chris. Steve, Steve Pogger, myself, we spent endless hours and you were like a dog with no, you didn't give up on this.
This is, this is icon bearing, really fantastic news. And none of you have been updating privately over the last week because we had some good news two weeks ago, and I wanted to update the community and you guys all at the same time, so everyone knows exactly where we are. But the first, I'm going to start with a thank you. We set up a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation, the Deputy Secretary, a slew of attorneys, Steve Pogger from the Downingtown Main Street Association. Steve, Chip, you were there, and we had a developer come forward interested in going through the labor of securing the property where the train station is going to move and presenting a plan to us that we could take to PennDOT that included some really interesting things. So, we went to PennDOT in March. We sat around a big long table and we talked about what PennDOT wanted to see in a project, and we asked them to consider this project and get back to us. So, we went through the summer. We didn't hear any back, didn't hear anything back from PennDOT, didn't hear anything back from PennDOT, which in itself is not that unusual. But we had a deadline, by the end of the year, the property needed to be transferred to this new developer. The agreement with sale ended at the end of the year. So, I reached out to the Secretary of Transportation in September on a 15-minute phone call. I pleaded with her to give the project one more consideration. And I asked her to share with us locally PennDOT's goals for the station, because I thought we could meet their goals in terms of a train station project. So, I went to Harrisburg five weeks ago, four weeks ago, after meeting with Steve and the developer, and we laid out, they gave us what they wanted to see in a project, a pedestrian bridge, a locally maintained public spaces, rear, sorry, a trail access to the Chester Valley Trail, over 500 parking spots within a certain distance of the train station platform, construction easements for PennDOT to build their platforms. And we walked out with an agreement that allowed the developer to go through and purchase the property. The property went through a share of sale 13 days ago. The property will be acquired by the developer in two weeks. And you guys are going to see plans beginning next year in what will be, I think, one of the largest private investments in our community's history. And I just want to share you some points of the plans as it stands to that. We're talking about a plan that includes 300 apartments and condos, 20,000 square foot retail, privately built, meaning not on the backs of the taxpayers, pedestrian bridges to Johnson Town, so the Johnson Town community has access to this train station. $350,000 in yearly revenue to the borough. That's equivalent to three tax increases in a town of this size. A million dollars, 1.1 million dollars in revenue to the school district on 60 acres, which is a healthy revenue stream for our school district. A locally and privately maintained public spaces. So, we're going to have the ability to make sure this is a clean and well-kept train station in perpetuity, especially if the private developer picks up a lot of the cost of maintaining all these properties. So, I think this project meets a lot of our community goals in this. Counsel is going to have some big part to play moving forward. I'm excited that we've gotten it over a hurdle and moving forward. And I think that this community, I know, and I think Steve and Steve can attest to this, when we met with folks from PennDOT, they had heard about what's going in Downingtown. And they talked about the fact that this is a community that's worth a large public investment. And certainly, this community represents that. We've had over 100, a year, had over 800 members of this community sign on to a campaign and support this project earlier this year, run through the Downingtown Main Street Association. So, that kind of public support gives PennDOT an easy win, and we're ready to take that support to the developer and get him to invest over $100 million in our community. We're really excited about that. So, I just want to share that goodness with you. You're going to hear a lot about this in the community moving forward. It's not a secret anymore. And I just wanted to field any questions that you may have.
I think, Josh, that 350,000, that's, that's over a mil that we're going to be able to put back into the town, not counting the revenues from the parking lot. And your endless hours on this, is unbelievable. And what you helped, you know, push and were in the background and work things out there with us, and counsel helped push it through by doing the agreements and all, so you guys should be very proud of it.
Just to clarify that a little bit, this is a 4.5 percent increase to our tax base. Our military rate right now is 7.65 mils. This is the only borough that hasn't raised the military rate in the last three years already. So, one mil addition to our tax revenue, significantly, it's one seventh of what we're already taking in. So, I just want to highlight that for everyone else, this is a, balances our tax base, but it also, and this is important, those buildings come down early next year and safety fencing goes up early next year. So, we also have a safe site for this property, which is, I think, going to be just as important to the Downingtown community.
Any questions, Counsel?
Just, life's gone. It's, I think it's awesome. I grew up in that neighborhood and it's broken my heart to see it languish like it has for the past decade now. And if this is exciting news, I'm very happy to hear this, and I appreciate your answers.
Any questions?
Josh, I, thank you so much. Really appreciate what you're doing for the town. You want to...
Bravo.
All righty, next, we have any updates or put in the order? Okay, Anne?
I'm here.
Yes?
Ark is looking for a new executive director, and so if anybody, who's been in the position or knows somebody who, contact Ark.
I have flyers for the holidays competition, if anybody wants to. I'd love to have your house on the tour, the outside of your house on the...
And who's going to have that? Explain that.
It's the Downingtown Thorndale Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring it with the Downingtown Parks and Recreation Commission. First prize is $200, second prize is $100, third prize is $50. We have homeowners who will enter the competition to be able to vote. Everybody can be a judge. It's $5 a vote, half of it goes to the VA hospital and half to future park and rec events. When you purchase a ballot, you will get a map and ballot telling where the houses are. You have two weeks from the Downingtown parade Saturday, all the way to the 23rd to vote, and the prizes will be awarded on the, through the 22nd, the prizes will be awarded on the 23rd.
That's fantastic, Bill.
All right. So, if you decorate your house, you might as well try it and enter the competition and win some money.
Very good.
Phil? I just have a question for Steve. The meeting that we had canceled on September 21st for lack of the form, do you have any idea of what that cost not to have that meeting?
Obviously, we had to re-advertise. You know, when the attorney's present, that's a cost, and then staff, so I mean, I didn't figure it out for probably $500 to $700.
And that was one of the lowest one close we've been. All the staff had to take time off, which I had to re-advertise the comp time. I personally went happy that I showed up in that big timeout as several other people. We had the majority reported in. We're actually going to have to make, we didn't have any of that budget. We spent thousands of dollars on it this year. That wasn't the first time. And we're going to have to put something in the budget. I don't know where Steve, somebody suffered for that. We had to take that somewhere. We didn't have that in our budget. So, it is a hardship on our budget, and we can't, between now and then, our meetings are pretty close to approving, like, am I correct, Steve? We have a regular timeline now. So, we got to have a forum, or if we don't, we have to know we're not going to have a forum, so we can reset it. We can reset the meeting.
Well, I, is it going to be necessary, if you knew ahead of that meeting that two council people, counselors were not going to be there, is that correct?
Yes.
It's sad to say, but since we can't rely on other council people to notify ahead of time when they're not going to be able to be here, should we consider maybe if two council people are not going to be here, that we cancel the meeting in advance just on the chance that somebody's not going to show up?
I mean, we have citizens standing up and saying, "We're not school kids and all." And we should be able to call up, call up, text Steve or I, email somebody, I mean, it shouldn't have to be done. That's not, we're grownups here. We're elected officials. We owe it to our constituents to do it. I mean, it's just awful. It's not, it's not the first year, and it's, it's a hardship on the town and able to run the meetings. We run our meetings lean and I, we just have to do what's right. Everybody agrees, but then everybody doesn't do it. I see your hand, I'll get to you later. Thank you. Phil, still, I don't know if you've done that or you have.
Well, I just, I know that if you didn't call up, you work at McDonald's and you don't call up and you don't show up once, they might give you a slap on the wrist, no, twice, you're done. And I think what we're doing here is a little bit more important than flipping birds. And I've never in my professional career seen anything like that and had it be tolerated. And I think it's a slap in the face to your fellow council people, to the staff, to the taxpayers. We're going to spend money, and we're going to spend money sometimes on things that we disagree with in here. But wasting money, I can't handle. It just drives me nuts, you know? And just for somebody not being able to text somebody in this building that I'm not going to be able to be here blows my mind, you know? I'm sorry, that's all I got to say.
I agree, and you provide, I'm sorry, maybe you had a comment on that.
I do, because obviously, we all know that the person we're talking about is me, that I do not call in when I'm not going to be here. So, I get to have an insight that I did call in when I wasn't going to be at the meeting. And this all happened after I dropped the charges, saying that we would start over, and I did call in. That was my act of good faith, that everything was going to be kind of a reset button, and we were going to work together, Counsel or President of the Council.
You lost that case.
So, excuse me.
You don't even try.
Well, excuse me.
Bring it up, you didn't have a case.
No, I have a court. I have a duty to me.
Go right there, finish.
And I didn't lose, I dropped the charges.
Yeah, right. Pretty lively.
Oh, my gosh.
Did you laugh when you got sued by the ex-manager?
You're outworked. Go ahead.
You motherfucker.
Go ahead.
I didn't interrupt you, didn't interrupt you. I have my opportunity to speak on my behalf.
I'll stay up and get that call. You already had icons.
Thank you.
It was a vicious act.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, so after I dropped the charges, you know, I dropped the charges as an act of good faith, since we wanted to, I was told we wanted to work together. So, I, when I was not going to be here, I called in and I said I was not, or emailed or something, that I wasn't going to be absent from a meeting. And that was the meeting that while I was away, it's interesting that Counselor Day is making such a big deal out of this, because Counselor Day made a motion during the meeting to appoint someone to, I believe it was the Parks and Recreation Historic Commission, I don't know. It was not on the agenda. It was not on the agenda at all. And the way the meeting went was it came on a new business. And Mr. President, you said, "Phil, do you have any new business?" And Phil said, "Yeah, I made a motion to appoint so-and-so." Wasn't on the agenda. And counsel didn't ask any questions, they just passed it, and they appointed so-and-so to this commission. And so, I felt as though I was really stabbed in the back. Here, I said I wasn't going to be at the meeting, and something that was not on the agenda was put through without any discussion, any, anything. I had no opportunity to represent my constituents. That's my job. You're talking about our job. My job is to represent constituents. And if you're going to be sneaking things through on the agenda when I'm not here, I can't do that. So, they were not represented that night. So, from that point on, I realized, and we can see by your behavior in the meetings towards me, and yes, I get started with you as well, we can see that there has been no reset button. We are not working together very well, and I am not going to give you the opportunity again to really backstab the citizens by pushing things through when I'm not at a meeting. So, no, I cannot tell you when I'm going to be here.
Oh, that's not true.
I mean, that's, sorry. That's the way it is. You come to the actual president and go.
Yes, and everything you said wasn't true. You ought to go talk to Sam's friend. Go ahead.
Nobody, nobody...
Seriously, just pass off.
All I'm asking is, I come to the meetings, I try to be responsible, I listen, I vote. But when we waste $1,000 because you didn't call twice, and I call you on the phone and said, you know, try to get you, and you don't get to call.
I haven't had any calls.
I have, I called you both times.
No, I'm sorry, I can look on my phone, I haven't gotten calls. What number did you call?
Seriously, I haven't either. What I have in here, it says, "Andone." Now, we'll check at the end of the chart.
I have not received a call.
But I would just like to ask right now that everybody who's going to miss a meeting, will you commit to calling?
No, we're not. Until he can commit to not putting, yes, he can commit to that, so long as I am assured, absolutely assured, that there will be no executive sessions that are not announced, and there will be no, anything put on the agenda at the last minute or pushed through when I'm not here. That what's on the agenda is on the agenda, and I'm not going to come back and find out if something has been pushed through that wasn't on the agenda.
We conduct our business the same every meeting. Once in a while, we miss something, we put it on. No, we are not going to promise to you, and executive session doesn't come up. You have an obligation to do that, Anne.
As do you.
It's not fair.
No, it's not fair.
It's not fair.
I agree. I absolutely agree, Doctor.
And if you got to vote to do whatever, we'll do whatever, okay? You, I don't understand why you won't do when the rest of the cast agrees.
I just told you.
Just like Sam said, you need to work as the body of compromise. You don't want to do that. You just want to sit here.
You're opening a criminal case.
And you want, you want to run any stage around everybody. Anybody else have any comments? Motion to adjourn? Back it.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So glad I didn't talk out of your head. Your speech up there was just lovely with such a big smile. It was so...
Well, it compares to everything else. I couldn't have looked, I couldn't have been, but they...
You were, you were a sunflower with all of this, with all the onions going on.
This is a great organization. Thank you for that.
I have to tell you, I have not been to the library. I'm in East Grand Line.